Yes, I'm here.
And Director Ku.
Good evening.
All right, great, thanks. Thanks, everybody. Looks like we have all board members in attendance. With that said, we could, we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I was muted there. All right, just a few things to go over. I guess I was muted during that, so anyway. Couple of, couple of items regarding the board meeting today. So first of all, all items that will be discussed today and that are on the agenda are all deemed routine and necessary. So this is all within the current OPMA regulations and the governor's regulations on our meetings. So there won't be any new made agenda items added. These are all. Say that again? Oh, so those, those, these are just all items that are routine, our routine, like our regular consent agenda and necessary items that are needed to be able, just for the day-to-day operations of the, of the district. So there's that. With that said, no public comments will be taken verbally today. Only if you, if anybody has public comments, just please email them into TracyNormanTNorman@SquimSchools.org. And those will be looked at. We did receive one public comment from the prior, after our prior meeting, so prior to this. And I'll be happy, I'll be responding to that via email here soon. And then also for any participants and also for board members as well, because it helps with any kind of feedback, that make sure, please, to keep yourself, yourself muted. And preferably, if you could turn your videos off as well, that would be helpful. It helps with maintaining the bandwidth while we're operating. So anybody with, please do that. And I think that covers all of our ground rules. Actually, I will go ahead and with the vision and mission statement today. So our vision is, our community inspires and prepares each student to thrive. And our mission is, in connection with our community, the Squim School District empowers staff to inspire hope and provide flexible, innovative learning opportunities in a safe and respectful environment, so each student thrives. All right, we got. All right, we got some background noise back there. So if everybody could please check their, their microphones and where your microphone shows on your, where you're at, click on that and it should have a line through it that, that shows you're muted. Thank you.
And President Gibson, Robert Clark was kicked off, so he is going to do the presentation. He's going to log back on real quick.
Okay, well, I guess we will wait for, for Dr. Clark. We, who, I didn't do it.
I'm back on.
All right.
Kicked me off.
Oh.
So I did, Chair Gibson, I did not hear everything you said. Did you tell people that the meeting is being recorded?
That part I did not, so thank you for that reminder.
Thank you.
So. So yes, the meeting is recorded, is being recorded. And with that said, we did go over all the other ground rules there, Dr. Clark. And we are now at, up to the, it's on, it's up to you. You're on.
Well, a couple of things in special presentations. One of the things, over the past four to five weeks, we've had a group called Squim PC Users Group, who have donated almost 100 or somewhere around 100 computers, devices for our students. These are refurbished computers that they've taken the initiative. They've been donated to them, they've refurbished them, and we're giving them out to our kids. We're not loaning them, we're not checking them out because they were never ours to begin with. So we are just handing them over. In many cases, they're desktops, there's laptops, and I believe there's even a few Chromebooks. Squim PC Users Groups, a volunteer group, it's been operating since the mid 90s and has 22 members. They operate a tech shop two days a week and they make these devices available through both monetary and physical donations. And to date, over this period of time, have provided approximately 800 computers to local residents. Very big thank you to the members of the Squim PC Users Group on behalf of our staff and families. So, yeah, again, we, we would not be moving forward as well with some of our distance learning without these devices.
That's wonderful. Thank you, Dr. Clark. And just a quick question, do we have a way to know how we could maybe, if anybody wants to make more donations to that group, on how they could contact them?
I don't personally, but I can get that information and share it at the next board meeting.
Okay, thank you.
And then the next one is, last week was Teacher Appreciation Week. And we had some banners around the school on Monday. Sent all, the whole administrative team sent the teachers a letter on Wednesday. And then we had some coffee and cookies. And we have a video slide that Tracy and others have prepared.
Could you guys see that?
We could, yes, thank you. And thank you to the district and all those. And thanks to my fellow board members for holding me up there and participating. And just unfortunately, due to work requirements, I was unable to participate and all. But what a wonderful event. And I know that we just, you know, we just appreciate the teachers. And we said it time and time again, on a regular basis. And especially now with all the additional work that they're going through to keep our, our students engaged and, and educated and, and working on a day-to-day basis. So again, thank you to all the teachers from the, from the bottom of my heart. Really appreciate everything that you guys do. Okay. So moving on, we have some agenda items here. First up, we have approval of the minutes for both our regular meeting and our board workshop from the 27th.
I can make a move to approve. Oh, I'll second.
All right, sounds like we got a motion from Director Pickens and a second from Director Ku. Any discussion on those? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And the opposed, same sign? All right. Motion carries. Next up, do any changes to our agenda?
No.
All right, hearing no changes to our agenda. Approval of our agenda?
Look for a motion. Move to approve as presented.
All right, got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All right, hearing none, no, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And the opposed, same sign? All right, and then next up is our consent agenda, motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Director Stoffer.
All right, so we've got a motion in a second. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign? Right. And motion carries. All right, where are we at here? Okay, as we said prior, we had no, we are not taking verbal public comments. We did receive a couple of public comments and, and I'm reviewing those and responding appropriately to those. And we do have our student board reps that are excused at this time. So moving on, we have our regular board communication. So we'll start that off with Director Jeffries.
Okay, thank you. We just talked about a public comment. I'm glad to see we got some. I would encourage the public to use that forum to get information to us. We are your representatives between the public and the school board. And if we don't hear from people, it's tough. Calling or emailing an individual board member not only is probably the least way to get information to all the board members. And I'm not sure it's appropriate, it is not appropriate for board members to respond individually. So if you can send your comments to Tracy or to, there's an email for all the Squim School Board members. That would be appropriate, so I encourage that. Yeah, kudos to the PC users and what they've done. And the teacher appreciation. It, that pat on the back is very, very important. So I applaud their efforts. I applaud the school district's efforts, the staff, the administration in this time of crisis, and then especially the students. I listened into a Texas School Board meeting, statewide school board meeting this morning from the, actually, it was the Mexican-American School Board Association out of Texas. And they were interviewing five students. And it was amazing there, the student insights and perspective on, from their side of this pandemic response was very educating. We're all thrust into this new way of educating overnight. Some of us were more prepared than others. It's kind of, I heard it described as like flying an airplane while still trying to build it. And that's pretty accurate. School is both instruction and experience, and both of those have been significantly modified, changed. And I really can't express my concerns and appreciation for how everybody's trying to hold up and do the right thing. It's great. I think there's also a little bit of a governance crisis on how school boards are to act within this, this particular crisis. And so we need to keep working on that. As far as the district's concerned, once upon a time, we talked about this district's pandemic plan. And it was being revised. I'd like to see that plan and make sure it's been updated. Now that we have a real pandemic to talk about and what kind of training the staff is going to carry on. I would encourage the district to make, to take a look at having a secure, a safety officer, health safety officer for the district and maybe each school to help remind teachers and whoever's in the, to remain safe. Human nature at being what it is, we are social creatures. And even the best intentions, we will socially aggregate, if not constantly reminded to separate and pull those masks up over your nose. I'm appreciating OSPI is starting up that work group to start looking at what school might look like in September. And I know we are starting one up also, and I encourage that. Anything we can do to help would be great. And I still have some real concerns about the tariff and the budget and future budgets and concerns. I don't want to paint ourselves into a corner nor be caught flat-footed in the future. But at the same time, we need to move forward and make an excellent school system, given these unusual circumstances. Phew, that's it.
Thank you, thank you, Larry. Next up, Director Ku.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of items again to the Squim PC Users Group for their just Herculean efforts to refurbish and get those computers out there. I personally know of a couple of students that benefited from this most recent donation. And perhaps most like Director Gibson, who also works in economic development. One of the most heartbreaking realities that we're witnessing with this COVID crisis are the gaps in access to, you know, connectivity broadband and technology. So with that, you know, certainly, you know, comes a focus of things that we can do beyond the school board, moving forward to try and close those gaps. But the Squim PC Users Group is a key cog, or has, you know, been a key cog in that recovery effort. So I can't thank them enough for their work. And I'm pretty sure I have a few donations laying around the house. And as Director Jeffries mentioned too, the Teacher Appreciation Week, it seems understated and really kind of almost quietly so in this new norm of online only. But it sure, I think, did everyone's heart good to see some of the teachers that did show up on the appreciation event last week. And otherwise, just, you know, giving shout out and love to our staff and everything that they do to teach our most precious assets here in the community. Looking forward to discussing our student board rep process, so thank you for having that on the agenda. Also want to thank folks who have chimed in via email for public comment. Just a notice of just thoughtful comments. And so appreciate Director Gibson, you obviously taking the lead to respond to those and people putting together some, some real thoughtful things to share with the board. And finally, I think I'm most inspired, or no, no, not above the teachers, but second to that, of the beautiful work by the city of Squim on First Street. I've found myself driving down on purpose, as using that as a main thoroughfare these days, at the appropriate speed, of course. But really just inspired with the, the beautiful work that's finally done there. And despite the, you know, challenges of the moment, the clean slate, the fresh palette that it offers us as a district and what we choose to do in the future regarding our facilities. So it's fun to see it come together. Hallelujah. I think it's just about completely done unless somebody tells me otherwise, barring a tree or two that need to go. But just pass my kudos along to the city for everything they did to see this through and certainly their interaction with the district through that. That's all I have.
All right, great, thank you. And I think I'm with you there, Director Ku, on, that's why I kind of asked that question of Dr. Clark, on how to get ahold of the PC group. I, I got a bag of a few laptops that could probably use some overhaul and, and donations. So, yeah. All right, next up, we have Director Stoffer.
Yes, hi, good evening, thank you. First, Dr. Clark, thank you for the weekly update. It's extremely helpful in these times of our social distancing and all that's involved in there. But having this weekly update is extremely helpful, so thank you. Also, back on the WASDA meetings, which are Mondays and Thursdays. And appreciative of that work and, and just the thoroughness of the information coming for us. And that helps, we see that we're not in this alone. Same questions, similar questions from across all 295 school districts. And the legislative work continues. There's several meetings that occur over the last, since our last meeting, that's subcommittee work. And tomorrow I have a, a meeting where we're looking at some streamlining of some of those positions. And also, the window to submit positions for this next legislative session has been extended to the 20th of May. And instructions and the application for that is found on the WASDA's page. And I will more than likely send out a, a update for Director Area Four here by the end of the week, which covers some of the other items. There was, we had a Federal Relation Network meeting. And that looks at federal legislation and broadband. And thank you, Director Ku, for mentioning that, because that is a pretty high hurdle. And Sandy Hayes, you know, from North Shore, she, during our meeting, she mentioned it's, it's kind of similar. If back in the 1800s, if the school districts had been directed to provide electricity to every student. And now we're being directed to provide an internet access. And not all the school districts have the capacity, the personnel to do all of that. So WASDA is looking at a federal legislative position on broadband. And then talking with our congressional district folks, so second, Representative Kilmer and Murray and Catwell. And then that's occurring across the whole spectrum. The cap and gown, I had the privilege to attend that and it was well received. Just seeing our students come in, they were pretty excited seeing their faces. And so kudos to the high school staff for orchestrating that and the students participating. And then again, to the teachers' appreciation, that was another very heartwarming event. And I saw that we had a, from one of our teachers thanking us for being there, Dr. D. And that was very appreciative. Some community events, the Chamber of Commerce has selected a scholarship nominee or applicant. And we'll announce the name later on this month after we get some direction from Mitzi Sanders of how she wants to roll that out. But we looked at six students that Mitzi had provided. Not the whole scholarship notebook, because that was just not possible. But we had a real good snapshot. And the student that was selected, well, all of them, if we could have given a scholarship to all six of them. We really wanted to do that. But, and that Chamber Scholarship is based upon CTE and then Business Field. And a little bit on CTE, I note, in the WASDA's meetings, they talk a lot about the Career Connect at Home, which is another governor and then Superintendent Wrightdale's initiative. And that's, hopefully, we're rolling that out to our students. And otherwise, that's all I have. Thank you for this opportunity.
All right, great, thank you. Thank you, Director Stoffer. Next up, Director Pickens.
All right, thank you. Just second what was already said, the Squim PC Users Group, excellent work and much needed, and it's very appreciated. It was great I was able to attend the Teacher Appreciation Drive, Drive Thru. It was, it was nice to see some of the, some of the principals that probably I haven't had contact with teachers in a while. Sort of see that, that touching base, obviously, socially distancing, of course. But able to see that camaraderie or just nice to see that interaction. And certainly appreciated the teachers that were able to attend. But appreciate all the Squim teachers, especially during these times. The very promising, this stuff coming out on the WASDA calls, talking about some of the, some of the funds coming from the CARES stimulus funding. So excellent news that we weren't sure about anything that was of any substance before. But now it looks like that's getting a little more fine-tuned, so I'll be interested to hear more about that later. And of course, just staying in tune with the Open Public Meetings Act and making sure that we're doing everything by the book that we need to. So we're, we're, we're representing the, the public in the, in the proper way and doing our due diligence. So along with one thing that came out that I found interesting was kind of a survey about how other districts are doing their grading across the, across the state. So I am, I am interested to learn a little bit more about the differences in grading practices. So I don't know if there's one method that's a little better than the other. But I know they tried to keep some local control in that decision, which, which I think is a, a good thing. But it certainly wouldn't mind learning more about the differences and why one might be better than the other in our case. So, and other than that, I'm, you know, certainly have questions about some of the other things on the agenda that we'll be talking through. But yeah, definitely appreciate our Squim teachers, so thank you very much.
There, thank you, Director Pickens. So yeah, again, I'd like to, I'd like to thank my board members for participating in those, those WASDA calls. I was, actually had the opportunity to jump on today during my lunch hour, just, you know, work. Unfortunately, my work level has been unadated and haven't had a lot of opportunity to participate in those. So just some, you know, some things that I gathered from it today too. And, and things we'll, we'll need to be having some discussions on is options for our, our public as the, the OPMA regulations that we're under right now are lifted and, and how we're going to go about that. So those are discussions we're going to have to have at some point. And, you know, that's one of the main things there. You know, kind of ditto to the rest of the group as far as, you know, the PC Users Group. And, and again, always appreciative of our, our teachers and the staff and all the work that they're still continuing to put in while maintaining all, all the regulations that we're under at this time. You know, there's, there's a lot of unknown future at, right now. And a lot of, a lot of thought needs to go into what that future looks like. And so, you know, but, but most of that is driven from the top down, the governor down at this point. And so we'll just keep, keep rolling along as, as we're guided and then work within those, those guidelines. And that's, that's all I have. Okay. Next up, we've got the superintendent's report.
Thank you. One of the things, and I will allude to what Director Pickens spoke about. We got the initial assessment of what we're getting from the federal government in regards to the CARE stimulus money. When I believe, I don't know if that was the first round of stimulus or the second round. But we're going to receive a or the second round, but we're going to receive approximately $700,000, $699 to be exact. So that, that will be a welcome addition. We get that through the Title I formula, but it cannot, it, it doesn't have to be used for Title I. We don't anticipate getting that money, quote, "in our hands" till sometime end of June, July. And then we will make some, and we'll get some parameters on how it can be spent. So I, real good news, obviously, in this timeframe, and I'm going to talk a little bit about that when we talk about the resolution. We've talked about the Teacher Appreciation Week, and that was very good. I, I enjoyed participating in it, and I, I thank the administrators and the board members who were there, and a good time was had by all. One of the things that I do need to mention, and we talked about over the last three to four weeks, and OSPI came out with, they changed their guidelines kind of midstream. And originally, they said June 19th was the last day for every school, and then they backtracked, and now they've come back and said June 19th is the last day for all schools. So June 19th will be our last day. That is an OSPI edict, and we have to move forward from there. That will be part of the resolutions that the board will approve at the next board meeting. We have three resolutions in regards to continuous learning plans, grading, and that. And one of the things that I do want to talk a little bit about grading, because I think a couple of board members brought that up. I will champion our high school administration and staff for having a real strong, crucial conversation about that, and also seeking out knowledge of what other school districts are doing in our area. Because, you know, how our students are graded, that is, is, and how our students are graded and how other students are graded is very important, not just for this year's senior class, but for ninth graders, 10th graders, and 11th graders, because that's who they will compete with. And I don't know if all of you know this, but about three weeks ago, Seattle School District came out with their policy, and that is every student's getting an A or an incomplete. And the incomplete can be made up by meeting the standards, and it doesn't need to be made up until the student graduates. And while our high school admin, our high school staff and administration have not finalized it, that is what they're leaning towards, because other districts in our area. And we do not want to put our students at a disadvantage when they are competing to get into colleges and universities and scholarships with those from outside of our area. And I'll have a greater discussion on that at our next board meeting when we approve that resolution. We had our first meeting on Friday with the building principals about reopening school in the fall. I, I, I was on a meeting, a conference call with all the regional superintendents right before this, and while everyone's fairly positive about school opening in the fall, I, I think they're all leaning towards the potential of it being a hybrid model, and that it will look different than any school opening we've ever had in the past. And we've been tasked by Superintendent Reichdahl with, you know, making plans for that opening. They have formed a work, work group, OSPI does, of about 70 people, and that includes teachers, principals, superintendents, board members, community members, legislatures. And they are, their first meeting is Wednesday at 8:30, and they're going to meet for either three or four Wednesdays until the first week of June, and then they're going to come out with some recommendations. We have to be prepared for those recommendations, and the principals are meeting with their staffs, and we're coming up with ideas. I think the one thing that will be consistent that I continually hear are the social distancing parameters and the requirement of facial coverings or mask. And so we're, we're going to have to figure that out. I know my brother teaches in a school in Eastern Washington. I shared this when I talked to him this weekend, and when he goes into their building, he, he has to get his temperature taken, and he's, when he signs in, and if his temperature is over 98.6, I'm guessing, I don't know, he didn't tell me the parameters, then he would not be able to go into school. And those are some of the things that we're going to have to look at. I talked, I talked to Sonya Bittner today. Obviously, the connectivity and the devices with our kids will be a hot topic for that item. So we're moving forward with planning, although it's more in the, you know, spitballing type of stage right now, and we'll fine tune that as, as the rest of this school year goes along. Some of the things, we also, the cabinet met with Vince Ricabini last week to talk about the opening of our online academy to try and recapture some of the students that we've lost to other online academies, and it was a good presentation. We still have some questions for him, and we're giving him, and that they will be answered, and that he will present to the board at a board meeting in June. But I think it's a good, I, I, I think that's a next step on moving our district forward in multiple ways, and that gives another avenue of learning for our students who, for whatever reason, choose not to go attend a brick and mortar, regular, run-of-the-mill school. So I'm excited about that. I'm also, when we get done with this meeting, I, at the next meeting, I'm going to talk about setting up an MNO levy committee, or EPNO levy, excuse me, I showing my age there. Date myself, it's EPNO levy, and then the potential of a capital projects levy. I, I talked to John Gores, and I have some amounts, and I want to move forward. That is a must for us. The capital project levy is also pretty important to the district, but it is not at the same level as an EPNO levy. So that's where, what my report is, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
All right, I'll just do a roll call for questions there. Director Ku, anything?
No, but thank you, goes without saying. Appreciate the proactivity and involvement in looking down the sever increasing timeline for getting our students back in class next year.
Director Jeffries?
No, thank you, Rob, for all the hard work. I do appreciate your conferences with the other superintendents on the WASDA conferences. They're always highlighting how hard the superintendents are working and working together. So, you know, we're all, all kind of in the same boat, so that's fantastic. We'll probably have a lot more questions coming down the line. Because of the nature of our meetings, and I mentioned this last time, you know, somewhat being out of the loop, having sometimes to approve things on deadlines without really having a good chance to talk about it. So maybe some more workshops are in our future about the, the $700,000, the online academy, the EPNO, which I think is also called an enrichment levy, I get confused by it up, too.
That's what the... Thank you.
Okay, Director Stoffer.
Really nothing else to add from the other comments, and appreciate the report, Dr. Clark. I know also at the next WASDA conference, our call on Thursday, Mr. Gores and then Trevor from Piper Jeffrey are, will be the focus of that call on Thursday. And they're talking about all things levies and bonds, so very helpful there. But thank you for the work all involved here.
All right, thank you, Director Stoffer. Director Pickens?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you, Dr. Clark, for elaborating about the, the grading practices and also pass on, thank you to the, the staff that worked on that. I'm happy that you're taking a look at making sure that things are equitable so that SWIM students aren't necessarily put at a disadvantage regarding what other districts are, are practicing. So appreciate you making that a priority, and the, the rest of the staff making that a priority.
Thank you, Director Pickens. Yeah, I would, I would agree with that, on that statement. That's definitely appreciate making that a priority and looking forward to talking more about that, their next board meeting and, and the continuous learning plan and, and that grading policy and just, you know, how we're, how we're keeping our kids, our students in line and, and competitive with all the rest. So definitely appreciate that. And again, all the work that is continue to be done by the, by the staff in these times, so appreciate that. All right.
There was one, one more thing I want to piggyback on something Director Ku had to say when he drives down First Street. That plot of land where the community school used to be looks like a nice spot for a new building, doesn't it?
Indeed, it does.
Amen. Absolutely does.
Yeah. Well, that's for another day.
Yeah. All right. Okay, moving on to board business, old news. So first thing on the agenda is just the continued COVID-19 discussion. Sure, is it what additional we have to talk about, anything? I, I do know, just again, one of the things that I, I brought up in board communication is just, you know, as we look forward to kind of having a discussion of how we're going to handle as the OPMA rules lift and, and continuing to be able to allow public to participate or at least listen in. And, you know, if we're going to continue with this method, whether we're still at a point to meeting in person, but we may not be able, be able to have a full crowd there. So some of those, those things are definitely on the agenda. I know that's been a topic of discussion as well on, on the WASDA calls. And so, you know, those are some things that will, to be, to be looking at and thoughts and all. Any conversation you have there, Dr. Clark, on this topic?
No, I, I don't think anything that hasn't been said. I do, if, if I were to guess, let me back up for a second in regards to the OPNA, OPMA, and it being, you know, kind of shortened or, I don't know why I'm losing the word for it, but not the full-fledged OP, OPMA. At, at, on May 25th, May 26th, you know, a lot of the counties around the state may be going into Phase Two. And in a conversation, Dr. Unthank and Dr. Locke from Jefferson, or Dr. Turner from Kitsap County were on our superintendent calls. And one of the things they mentioned in regards to the phases is they expect Phase Two to only, you know, be enacted, you know, that last week of May, but they expect Phase Two to go longer than three weeks. Phase One, they think will only go three weeks, but they expect Phase Two to go longer. And what I, what I was thinking before I heard that was that OPMA may go back to its original state come the month of June. But you, you all may know different from, you know, and hear different from WASDA, but I, I, I'm guessing that's something that is near and dear to the heart of Washingtonians. And so a, as soon as, as soon as the governor and the legislature feels that it's safe to come out, I do look for the restrictions on OPMA to be dropped. That's the one thing that I, and again, that's my own speculation. I can't, I don't have any inside knowledge to that.
Well, I, I know today on, on the call, and I don't know if this was part of a past call, and I looked at some of my board members to chime in on this, but they did state that the, the governor's safe start and that process does not particularly pertain to K through 12. There's a different process that they're looking at under that. And so, and I haven't, I haven't gone through and looked at it. It's apparently it's on page five of that. I have notes regarding this. It was something I was going to research, and I don't know if any of the other board members have any input or thoughts on that. You're welcome to chime in.
Yes, Director Stoffer, it was emphasized at this meeting and the one prior, because they were, well, concerned that some folks in various districts were just interpreting the Phase Four and released the door, and, and we could all, we could have the graduation ceremonies and so forth. And so Tim emphasized that Public Edu, K-12 is going to be under a separate plan, and also the Department of Health will have a, a specific plan, too. And that, it talks about it, I guess, on page five, and I haven't delved into it. I do know tomorrow that the county Department of Health is having a special meeting. I think it's at 1:30. I need to check the link on it, but they are going to discuss what it will look like for businesses and trying to level, level the playing field for all the businesses and the requirements, because we know that some of the big ones maybe aren't all enforcing or where the little ones are having a hard time maintaining that. So long story short, there will be a separate public education phase than what's in the Phase Four.
I, and Director Stoffer, board members, that's what I understand as well. I would agree with that comment that K-12 education is going to have kind of a standalone phases, if you may be. But I don't know if that's applicable to OPMA. I think OPMA is going to be, is going to be the same for all institutions, governmental institutions. As far as the phase plan, you're, I, I completely agree with your comment.
Yeah, I would agree with the OPMA also on, on that, because you're seeing that across the other elected bodies. You know, I, I'm on the charter review, and, and we also are looking at that of how that applies. And so, yeah, it's, that's going to roll out differently, or it's going to be in one of these phases, I believe.
Yeah. Thanks, thanks for that, Dr. Clark. I agree, I would agree with that as well.
Director Gibson?
Yeah, go ahead.
Director Jeffries, for members in our audience, OPMA is the Open Public Meetings Act. We like to throw around their acronym. My guess is, hopefully, virtual board meetings will continue. I know before all this, there were several boards that were videoing or live streaming all their board meetings, and we, we may want to take a, a look at that. Plus the fact that any opening, even if the Open Public Meeting Act is, goes back to normal so that we can do all aspects of our job. As far as opening up meetings in face-to-face, just about all of those usually have some kind of medical caveat about people that are, have, are at higher... are at higher risk. So um I think for a while, my guess is we'll be having uh some form of virtual meetings so that directors and or the public can attend on a regular basis. And um so that's all I wanted to add in there. Thanks.
Thank you, Dick. Director Jeffrey's good points there. Anything else on on that topic before we move ahead? All right. Okay, next up, we have uh the conversation on the student uh representative applications. So uh it's uh we need to get that done. And I I haven't had the opportunity to participate in that, so I'd like to participate with that uh this year and in um in doing the uh interviews. Uh I guess the the number one question uh to lead off, though, and that's what we've got here uh in our packet is um just the uh the application and and the uh cover letter for uh any any of those that are um are interested and uh guess we yeah we defer to the district on, you know, how we're gonna maybe go about uh promoting that and and getting some getting some candidates to uh fill fill the slots that uh as uh Peyton Stern moves on to uh bigger and better things.
Um couple things. It's my intention that to move forward with this sometime this week, I will forward this letter to uh someone at the high school. I'm not sure who, whether it's Ann or the counselors. And I will get this email to every sophomore who is current sophomore, next year junior, who is in and uh pro uh encourage them to put their name in the hat. I might also try and get ahold of Olivia and see if she can uh give us a uh give those sophomores a brief synopsis of what it has been like to serve, you know, as a student rep and or Peyton, either one of them, and to move forward. Probably, I know on there, it says beginning May 11th through May 22nd. Uh might extend that a little bit just because I it it's, you know, because of the fact that we can't see these kids face to face and say, hey, you'd be a good student board rep, put your name in the hat. Uh so I'm a little concerned that that timeline's a little bit short. Might extend that through the end of May and and uh we would select in in June. But that's what my plan is.
That 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 sounds, yeah, I would I would think that that's because we're creeping ready here into the middle of May already. Um and then getting a time to be able to schedule a schedule the interviews um in whatever manner we can appropriately do that. Uh I I would imagine especially the sooner uh would definitely have to be all virtual at some point. So um uh any thoughts from the board out there uh or questions regarding this topic?
This is a
Timeline seems good, and I I would encourage you to participate if you do have the availability. It's a it's a pleasure to meet some of our outstanding students. Um I'm happy to assist if needed, but uh otherwise uh defer to my colleagues.
All right. Thank thank you, uh Director Koo. Uh Director Stoffer had something?
Yes, um timeline, yeah, probably do need to extend it. Um Olivia's working at uh um Cato and or Quito and uh working pretty hard. She I saw her the other day and she uh um is uh interested in uh keeping up the work with um on the board and and all that that means. And uh yes, I would encourage both her and and Peyton to reach out to our other students. And as they play such an important role, this voice, student voice. And perhaps Director Jeffries uh would be interested in being on that interview committee with you, Director Gibson.
Thanks for nominating uh Director Jeffries there.
Yeah, I'd be I'd be interested in that. I think it's really important to have those student reps, and I think we ought to move forward and um with the extend the deadline, try to get the word out there, do some virtual interviews and then make the decision. So whatever the fall may bring, we can um hit the ground running.
All right, great. Thanks. Okay. Moving on, topic 1103, uh the topic we were not looking forward to this evening, but uh Superintendent Clark, I will turn the presentation over to you.
Okay, um I I concur, not looking forward to this, but I I do want to talk a little bit before we talk about the exact resolution. I I do want to clear up maybe some confusion, and I probably should have done this uh a couple of weeks ago. Uh when we have a situation that creates a budget deficit, and in our case, there's two reasons. One is declining enrollment, and the other is the potential of not receiving the number, the amount of EP and O levy funds as we budgeted with the potential of individuals not being able to pay their property taxes. That's the budget dilemma that we're or the fiscal dilemma we're in. But I don't want to confuse this resolution with the budget. We have to create, we have to tell our public about our financial situation before May 15th. There are things that could happen in the next two months, because we'll have our budget hearing sometime in July and pass our budget the first board meeting in August. Yes, this resolution impacts our budget because of declining enrollment and because of the EP and O levy deep potential EP and O levy decrease. But there are other things that could impact it positively. You're just like I talked about the $700,000 stimulus money. But we have an obligation to do these things by May 15th. I expect our budget come the middle of July to look better than what this looks like. But we have to, as a as administratively, uh the HR director, the business manager, myself, have to put forth to a certain degree, the worst-case scenario because of deadlines that we have an obligation to meet through our con our uh collective bargaining agreements and state statute. But just like I I believe, I don't know that I I said it in my board note. I was a two good pieces of news this last week was our levy collections were only between one and and 2% less than last year, which was is better than I expected it to be. We still have an October and uh another April collection for this upcoming budget, but I was pleased with that. And I was pleased with the 800, uh excuse me, $700,000 uh stimulus money. And it's but that doesn't negate from the fact that our enrollment is still down and that we're trying to right-size our district through, you know, the prototypical model and to get back, get closer to what the, you know, the McLaren decision actually was. I'm here to say that I that some of these cuts, some of these individuals who will be getting the layoff notices, I do think there's a good chance that they're going to be offered contracts. We just, the information that we have as of today, which is the uh closest board meeting to May 15th, we can't do that. And so while this resolution, it you know, is related to our budget, it is not our budget. And and I don't know that I did a good job of explaining that in prior meetings. So um that said, I hope you had a chance to read the resolution. And I would be happy to take questions.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that clarification there uh um, Dr. Clark. And um yeah, we'll open it up to questions. So uh was that Director Pickens? It sounded like he was uh ready to speak?
Yes, uh thank thank you, Mr. Chair. Um two two questions. Um they so this is this resolution just encompasses uh certificated staff. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um and if the other question, let me see if I can if I can word this correctly. Um if if we did not pass this resolution, it wouldn't prevent the district from necessarily still making reductions to the educational program. It would just but there it wouldn't, it wouldn't, but it wouldn't um prevent the option of still making those cuts to the program. It would just impact our ability to um to riff the the 3.2 folks that are that's proposed on this. Is that is that accurate? And tell me if you need more clarification as to what I'm asking.
So what you're saying, let me see if I understand what you're saying. Is what you're saying is if this resolution doesn't ask, would we still be able to make budget cuts and uh reduce educational programs, but we just would not be able to lay off people? Is that what your question says? Ask, excuse me?
Correct. Basically, the the delta between the 11.2 riffs proposed and it only having to be 3.2, I wouldn't want to that then, you know, be in a situation where we're then having to hire because we're with the program cuts. Yeah. So there's an eight eight folks that essentially do not have to be riffed because of through attrition. Um I'm assuming that even if this doesn't pass, we can still make cuts to the program to account for that. Is that clear?
Well, it's clear, but I I I think that what, you know, with the knowledge base we have today, I think that puts the district in a real rough financial position. Voting no and not giving us the ability to riff these employees at this point in time puts the district in a precarious financial situation. That's what I'm gonna say. Because I I I can't, I and I would not, I I I would not put forth this resolution if I didn't think it was the right thing to do.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay, Director Koo, anything?
Uh yeah, thank you. Just a couple of questions. Hold my notes. Um and I may be misunderstanding the scope of this document that uh you're seeking approval to tonight, but are there any components of this uh proposed um program that would preclude internal transfer requests for staff? So say we have a teacher. Okay.
No.
Okay. Um I think that's really all I had. Um I appreciate all your work on this and um candidly was pre- pleased to hear that the number reduced through natural, quote unquote, natural means, um although do find this um an undesirable burden of the board and certainly know it is of staff as well.
Thank you, Director Koo. Uh Director Jeffries.
Yeah, um a couple of things. Uh the 700,000 that you talk about, if I read it right, that uh you know, anybody sees a a chunk of money like that, they say, oh, good, we don't have to fire teachers. But essentially, OSPI has warned us that that shouldn't be used to um for um it's a one-time fund and it's not a good idea to commit to um salaries of people using that kind of money. It's more along the lines of the um I guess the timber funds we get that uh we don't know from year to year. This is a one-time one-time, maybe one-time only. So we can't um count on it. It it my understanding is those funds have to be used for for um COVID-19 response and preparation only, to put it in the words of uh OSPI. So just to alleviate, oh, we got that 700,000. Oh, cool. We don't have to fire teachers or layoff teachers, excuse me. That number that you uh this resolution does not include paraprofessionals and other staff. Is that correct?
That is correct. Uh we do not have the same statutory obligation to uh uh that we do with certificated individuals.
Okay. Yeah, that statutory obligation, that's kind of what I meant, but you're kind of putting this in a between a rock and a hard place and this unfortunate situation. When you guys were hmm, how can I put this? Planned and unplanned, you guys sat down before, actually, you started talking about this long before the COVID virus hit. So there was a plan in place. We've had some significant um resignations and requests for leave of absence from personnel in pretty significant programs like CTE and SOS. Are those people going to be replaced? Do we have in-house people that can take those jobs? Or are we going to have to hire people?
Um I think the answer to that question is a little bit yes, a little bit no. Um we will have to fill Steve Mahitka's CTE teaching position. We do not have someone on board that can teach what he teaches. As far as SOS, the potential of an internal transfer exists. Uh those
So we're there.
Questions.
Those four uh job actions we took, we approved tonight, two, I think a couple resignations and leave of absence. Are those, are those numbers, did those numbers, were they used to reduce the 11.2 number?
Yes.
But if we have to replace one of those at least, then maybe it does that does that first, does that mean there's an, we have to actually reduce it by 4.2?
Say that again, please.
Well, the, you know, with their numbers down, we got it down to 3.2 FTE, but we have to replace one of those people. So in reality, are we should we or maybe it's a 4.2 FTE instead? Do you see what I mean? We weren't counting on those two people.
Some of the positions that have been exited can be filled internally through whether it be a voluntary transfer or an involuntary transfer. But specifically in Steve Mahitka's position, w- we're gonna have to hire, and that's not reflective in that number of 11.
Okay. Having gone through a couple of riffs, I just want to make sure and and I'm counting on you and your team that we've uh dotted all the i's and crossed all the t's and we are following law, doing it legally and following the uh various collective bargaining agreements. It because I know my experience in the past is if there were favorites played or or if we forgot to dot an i or cross a t, um it these kinds of things can come back to bite us when teachers um take action against the school board or um
I fully expect there to be an appeal of this situation. And that's standard operating procedure.
Right. Okay, that's what that's been my experience also. And I agree with you and the rest of the board. This is um unpleasant, and I wish we didn't have to do it. And I really hope that our July budget lets us um hire back some of these people. I don't want to give them uh false hope, but at the same time, uh lets us hire back some of these people. I don't want to give them false hope, but at the same time know that we're going to do everything we can to keep everybody whole. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Director Stoffer?
Yes, thank you. So just to clarify, certificate staff is our teachers and principals. Is that correct?
And technically it would be Jennifer and myself as well.
Okay, thank you. And on this 700 Fed money, what I don't know if strings is the correct word, but what, what do you see it being attached to? And is there some flexibility in using that now to retain these 3.2? Because 3.2, I
If you do some quick math, it's probably somewhere between 250 to 300,000.
Okay.
To answer that question as best I can, until I know the parameters of how we can spend that money and how we cannot spend that money, I, I am very hesitant to change boats in the middle of the stream with this.
Okay, thank you. And I fully agree with the, the two statements there you made about one and two, the declining enrollment and then the possibility of not receiving our full EPNO or what's now referred to as enrichment funding levy. And that's, we know we have to have that. I'm out to the voters here or it will, it's a large, well, a portion of our funding that we will need. And then we, we have no idea what September is going to look like. And I, I see the 3.2 as we're going to need them because of and the different education model we're probably facing with, say, an A and B type with, we got some students that will go right ahead and maintain, but then we have our other ones that are going to need some extended learning and we have staff right now available for that. And and I agree with, are the question there that Director Jeffries asked about Mr. Mahicka, he has the training and has been instrumental in that CTE development and really don't want to step backwards on that. And, yes, extremely unfortunate. I, I know it's connected also to the declining enrollment and that's I appreciate the work that Darlene has done and you have done, sir, at identifying those. You briefed us all, every board meeting on what that looks like. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Stoffer. Yes, I said earlier, you know, not, not the best position to want to be in. But, you know, some great questions down the line. I do appreciate, you know, the questions regarding the 700,000. It's not money in our pocket at the moment and, and, and yes, we don't know how to, how to spend that. And it's not money that we're going to have continuous down the road. It's just a one-time lump sum. So you know, so there's that piece. And I, I do appreciate all the work as well and just kind of your, your open honesty in looking, looking at this as, as we've gone along. Because these are never tough decisions to be made and, you know, they're, they're hard decisions to be made, but, but when they have to be made, they have to be made and it's, it's not, it's not something that any, any manager, any director, any superintendent wants to have to, have to work around. But, you know, we have, we have our financial situation as it is. And hopefully, yes, it looks better here in a, in a, in a couple of months and, and we can we can bring them back.
I do want to share one other thing that, you know, and only because I've done this a long time, I also know certain things can happen, both positively and negatively. And I, 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 obviously positively, the online academy kicks in, we, we recoup some of those students. We look at, you know, we're opening choice at the four, five level, taking a waiting list. We're looking at having a transition kindergarten. We're increasing our numbers a little bit at OPA. So I, I do believe the potential for our enrollments coming back. I, I, I am optimistic about that. I think the one thing that I am a little bit pessimistic about, again, and that is when we, we've all talked about when we open in the fall, it's going to look different. And the potential that we will have employees who choose not to come back to work. But they will be able to get a doctor's note because of they're in a vulnerable capacity. And the potential of that with, with individuals who have a lot of cumula, accumulated sick leave, that we could have individuals who for their own and, and I'm not trying to, you know, second guess anybody's rationale for choosing not to come back. They have to think of themselves and their health and I respect that. On the same token, from a financial standpoint, that could impact our district because we have employees who have 180 days sick leave. So we could conceivably have a teacher who chooses not to come back for health reasons and that we, it's a double whammy. Where we're paying for that teacher is her, her salary and that we have to pay the salary for their replacement. And that is a concern in the back of my mind. Whether it be a teacher, a par educator, custodian, or any of those individuals. And I, I, I know that that has happened over, you know, obviously not, you know, I've never dealt with a pandemic before, but those, the potential of that happening does exist.
Okay, thank you for that. Open up last, last minute questions before we go to a roll call vote.
Mr. Chair, is, would we have a, a motion and a second on this? And then we would open it for further discussion because I, I limited my initial comments to just questions as opposed to other comments.
Thank, thank you for that, Director Pickens. Yes, this, this is, so if we could get a motion in a second and then go to second questions.
So move to approve the resolution as presented.
Do I hear a second?
So Director Stoffer, I'll go ahead and second it.
Okay. All right, now we can open it up to further questions. Director Pickens, go ahead.
Well, just, just some comments really and I, you know, I've, this is, this has been something that I've, I've contemplated for, for, for a few weeks because it is, as everyone mentioned, it's, it's a very, very unfortunate and I'm, they, based on a few details, I'm, I'm inclined to, to, to potentially vote, vote against this. Not because I, 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 I appreciate Dr. Clark's bringing it to us. I think that's, that's the right thing to do, given our current situation with the budget. And I wouldn't, if we were in this situation again, I wouldn't expect it any other way. And I know Darlene and, and Dr. Clark has done, they've, they've done a lot of work on this and they have really tried to minimize any impact for the classroom, which I appreciate. The the, the 700,000 coming in, I, I understand there may be strings and you, you can't bank on it. And I really understand the fact that that's not, that's one-time money. So I, I appreciate that. On the other hand, it's, it's a matter of just, we only really need it for the one year anyways, for at least these 3.2 folks, which, which wouldn't even cost that much. It would be, as I think Dr. Clark said, 250 to 300,000. So you, you will only really need it for one year. And then you're going to have some more attrition at the end of the next school year to capture. And I don't think we've probably ever had a school year where we didn't have at least 3.2 folk leave the district through attrition. So I, I don't see that as being a problem at all. I, I, I support the need to right-size our district. I just, if there's any way of doing it through attrition, that's always going to be the, the first option. The other, the other reason is the, the information about tax collections being down only one to 2%, which I think is, is promising as well. So at the end of the day, I think we have a rainy day fund, an ending fund balance for a reason. And I think that ending fund balance can easily capture, if the 700,000 doesn't easily could capture the salary of 3.2 folks, and then we can handle it through attrition in the following year. So based on those several reasons, it's, again, it's, again, it's a very difficult decision, but I think that we have to, we have to try to keep our folks, all of our folks whole, including those, those 3.2, that those, those four, I shouldn't call it 3.2, because there are really four people involved with keeping whole. And I think that's, that's all I have on.
Thank you, Director Pickens. Anybody else?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I really appreciate Director Pickens' comments too, and also the opportunity to have chatted with him a little more extensively than tonight and really some very good perspective shared. And the rainy day fund comment is one that continues to resonate with me. I am inclined to vote in favor of the motion afforded. But for a few reasons, one, I recognize that this arguably serendipitous tranche of funding that's coming down, the 700,000, we don't know the information around that. And I believe Director Jeffries, although I'm, now it's hearsay because I didn't hear it firsthand, but I, I believe he was the one that mentioned some of our colleagues had advised using that in a potentially similar fashion. So I'm looking at this really judiciously through the lens of financial stewardship. And I've been candid with y'all too and admitted my frustration with what I consider my own failure as a board director with previous budgets and having to essentially having to make tough decisions down the road when more information or the correct information became available. So I continue to say I don't envy our jobs. But in the, in the light of that and looking at perhaps an incomplete picture of what September may look like for us. And as a glass half-full kind of guy, I'm right there with you as far as what I hope it will be. I still, still feel it's incumbent upon us to follow the advice of our hired CEO here who was asking for this opportunity. I appreciate the mechanism that we have here as a board to weigh in with either our blessing or our dissent. And, yeah, I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. And like I said, I really, this isn't a decision I'm making lightly. So very much value the perspective of my peers.
Thank, thank you for that, Director Ku. Director Jeffries or Director Stoffer, anything?
Yeah, let me follow up with, yeah, I, I wasn't referring to anything that I had heard locally about the use of that 700. Just in my experience in 45 years of being in education, whenever there's a bucket of money someplace, everybody thinks they could, it'll be, it'll save when this particular bucket of money is coming with strings and what we can and can't spend it for and what is financially makes sense. That's all I was referring to. Yeah, if I vote yes for this, it'd be a very reluctant yes. My concern is this is kind of like a perfect storm where we had the decline in enrollment. That was the main reason for doing this. And we've been hearing about that was coming. And then the pandemic hit. And I agree with some things that Director Stoffer said, I agree about next fall is going to look very, very, very different. And all our rift planning was on the assumption that next fall was going to look just like it did last fall and every fall that we've known. And I, it's so unknown that and I do feel like I'm between a rock and a hard place a little bit. I know we delayed this meeting. It was supposed to be May 4th and we moved it to May 11th, so it'll be closer to that May 15th deadline. And now I feel the, as I mentioned before, I don't want to paint us into a corner that we're sorry for. So I'm, I'm still weighing my vote and listening to what, what the others have to say. I, I am really concerned about what this does to and for the learning experience and the achievement of the kids. And on top of that, what new, the new, new American high school is going to look like, whatever that means. And trying to maintain excellence in education while doing that. And it's going to be a very tough opposition and we may need all hands on deck. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Jeffries. Director Stoffer, anything?
I appreciate the fellow board members' comments. And again, back to Director, or Dr. Clark and the honesty and transparency on this decision. I lost the words right now, sorry.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Director Pickens.
Um, so so question, the, the, the 700,000, and I know that if the answer is, 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 I don't know, then, then I can appreciate that. But the 700,000, so do we know that there are specific strings to it and, and or are we predicting that there are and is it, and I don't want to get into a whole conversation about subplanting and that sort of thing. I know that there are different buckets of money that you can't just, you know, take from one to do another. And that happens with some of the, the high poverty lap funds and those types of things, but I believe there are some, they're already paying for out of our, out of our general fund anyway, related to COVID. So I'm, I'm just thinking if you, you know, you're paying money out of this pocket, but this money's going back in the other pocket type of scenario. So I'm wondering if, if, if there's any further insight that potentially Dr. Clark could share on that.
I, I would just, thank you, Director Pickens. I would echo Director Jeffries. I've never received any money from the federal government that didn't have strings. And what those strings may be, I don't know. So that's the answer. But I've never, I, I've never received federal money that didn't have strings attached. So I mean, will I, I'll know, I'm hoping by the end of June, but I can't tell you what they are. And I would be very hesitant to And I would be very hesitant to earmark those monies at this point in time.
Understood. And thank you for answering that. And just, just again, to reiterate that I have, I appreciate you bringing this resolution to us. I think that's the right thing to do, given our current circumstances with the budget. Regardless of the vote, I think it was the right thing to bring it to us because of the situation we're in. So, thank you.
Director Gibson, Director Stoffer, I have one more, if I could. So, because Director Pickens mentioning the subplanting and from my notes from the meeting, it said originally this federal funding is coming out of the Title I money. But the caution was not to spend it on recurring costs. And that also caution of not running out and start spending. But if there was necessary necessary spending needs, then this is what it was for. And I also am always very cautious about things coming from the feds. And there wasn't a true, clear the basic message from the conference call earlier was that more to follow in June, July type thing is what I heard or understand.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, just some last minute comments. Again, as I said prior, I appreciate the opportunity to look at this with all the information and kind of as Director Ku had stated earlier, it's, feel a little tough being in this position in light of where we were at the past, but I do, again, appreciate that we're making a decision based on real information and openness and that's very helpful. You know, we're talking about three to four people. These are our teachers, our neighbors, our friends. And that's always tough to be in that position when you're especially in a small community like ours. And it's just very difficult. But on the other hand, you know, we are hired to, we are elected to monitor the financial stability of the district and and this is a part of that. And so with that said, we have a motion in a second. If we could go to a roll call vote on this.
Okay, Director Ku, how do you vote?
Aye.
Director Jeffries, how do you vote?
Very reluctantly, aye.
Director Stoffer, how do you vote?
That would be another reluctantly, aye. But aye.
Vice President Pickens, how do you vote? Vice President Pickens, I didn't
Sorry, that, can you hear me?
I can, thank you.
That was, I'm voting no.
President Gibson, how do you vote?
I will be voting aye, yes.
All right, four in favor, one opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Resolution carries.
All right, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your open conversations and your open thoughts. Appreciate. They were all reluctant ayes, I'm sure, and appreciate that. Okay. With that said, is, last up is anything for anybody with, anything for the good of the order?
The only thing that I hope you also realize that it wasn't pleasant for any of us as well.
Totally, yeah.
Yeah, just, yeah, again, appreciate your work on it, Dr. Clark. Yeah, not a difficult thing to take on by any stretch, so definitely appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, if I may, an observation. An effort of this board in the past and something we may move to do again in the future is a perpetual analysis of how we do business as a board. But I just want to state for the record that, one, I believe what we just accomplished tonight in terms of the action of the board and not the success or failure of the motion in any way is an incremental improvement to this body, which has changed membership over time. So that's just a subjective assessment of incremental improvement. And frankly, I'll say this again, if it's me, I think the addition of a dissenting vote, one or more, is a reflection of excellence on a governing body. Because we're often accused of being in groupthink and things of the like, but I value that. And like I said, I think we should recognize some of the good things about the exercise we went through tonight.
Yeah, thank you for sharing that, Director Ku, because I, yeah, it's a very, very great point. And I know that each one of our votes were probably on a fine line there and could have gone either way. And yes, and absolutely, Director Pickens, you vote with your heart and you vote with what you think is right. And there's, and that's what we need to do here, is vote with what we think is right. And appreciate that.
Agreed.
With that said, our next meeting will be on the 26th.
Which is a Tuesday.
Which is a Tuesday, yes. And we've got a few things to discuss coming up as well, Director, Superintendent Clark mentioned. So we will probably be having an executive board meeting of some sort to discuss a couple of items upcoming and we'll make note of that here in the next couple of weeks prior to that board meeting. Okay.
Good, thank you.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good night, thank you.
Night.
Yeah, thank you. Good night.
Thank you.